Uba Sutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake self storage in Plumas Lake where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at Plumas Lake self storage dot com.
Supervisor Messick.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, the consent agenda, we're gonna pull item three eight seven and item three five nine off the consent agenda for the next regular board of supervisors meeting. And we're also gonna pull for presentation, item three eight six, three nine four, and three six seven. So if I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda with those changes.
So moved second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move on here.
Sound you heard was kicking the can down the road?
Yes. We're gonna hold off for a little bit on our special presentation. We're gonna move it to a later item because we're waiting for somebody that's stuck in traffic right now. So we'll go to public communications. Any person from the public wishing to speak? Mary, do you want to read that? You want me to read it?
I can read it. It is any person may speak about any subject concern provided is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. Supervisors is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of 15 minutes and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Please note, no board action can be taken on comments made under this heading. And through the chair, we do have three cards and we have no hands on Zoom. And the first person we have to speak is Tony Farley.
All right, Tony.
Excuse me, Chair. Before Mr. Farley begins, that motion to change those items on the consent calendar, was that also your motion to approve the consent calendar?
So we approved the consent calendar with those changes?
I didn't hear an opportunity for public comment before the vote. Did I miss that?
Probably. No, I didn't. I didn't call for it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure if there was anyone here from the public that wanted to speak on a consent item, they were given the opportunity for.
All right. All right. Is there? Hold on just a minute, Tony. Is there anybody from the public that wished to speak on any of the items on the consent items or the changes we made? Hearing none? Okay, so now we'll move on, Tony.
All right, Farley, Norbe City, 12 night, 12 night, Wilkie Drive, final health. Thank you, Kevin, County Minister, for your service. Also Chief Saxon. Thank you, County Council, Major George graduate. Thank you for your service. Chairman John Misk, thank you for your service. Also hope your son becomes supervisor, the first millimeter supervisor. Greg Bradford out of town for Sacramento trip. Seth Fuller, the funniest, the funny supervisor and D I D I supervisor ever. Supervisor House in the house. And Annie Vaskis, the funny, the funny Marine Corps Reserve deputy, Vietnam War veteran. Thank you, Rachel, P I O, also plays breast. And thank you, Earl Sheriff and Sheriff Willie Aronson. Thank you, Dr. Lou. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Captain. And thank you, Lieutenant over there. Thank you for your service for everybody. Thank you for the firefighter, fire inspector right there, mustache over there. Thank you, braver firefighters. Thank you, Battalion Chief, the Battalion Chief let a fire. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Tony. Next, Mary.
Second person we have is David Shelton.
Good morning. My name is David Shelton. I'm an aerospace engineer and a licensed pilot. And I also sometimes fly ultralights. Now, I'm here because in 2022, the county illegally banned ultralights. And in April of 2023, the FAA notified the county that the ban was in violation of federal grant assurance 22, which requires the airport to be available to all aeronautical users without discrimination against any class or type of aircraft. So in other words, you can target unsafe individuals, but not classes of users because that's discriminatory. Now, also, federal law prohibits such a ban without a valid safety reason and prior authorization from the FAA. The FAA says you have neither. So in, uh, let's see here. So in any event, the FAA requested the county to submit a corrective action plan within 60 days. And then two years later, notified the county that they had not met that obligation. And as far as I can tell, that's because Supervisor John Messick is determined to maintain the ban at all cost. And the rest of the board has been complicit in allowing the county to operate in willful noncompliance for more than three years now. So I'm here to deliver. Oh, and by the way, because of that, now the FAA is threatening to cut funding, which could cost the taxpayers several hundred thousand dollars a year. So I'm here to deliver a notice to cease and desist. I'm basically asking the county to meet its federal obligations immediately and to stop infringing on my right, my federally protected right to operate ultralights at the county airport. And I'm letting you know, I am going to resume operating ultralights safely, legally, and in compliance with all federal aviation regulations. Now I'll have in my possession, this letter from the FAA, which states, quote, "From the FAA standpoint, you would be allowed to land and refuel the Part 103 ultralight at the Uba County Airport," and quote, "There is no FAA approved restriction prohibiting ultralight use at that airport." So I'm basically here to warn you, please do not obstruct or interfere with my lawful use of the airport. In fact, I kindly request your cooperation in making the airport available for my lawful use as required by federal law. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes, the next person we have is Flora Jones.
Good morning. My name is Flora Jones, and I'm a resident of Plumas Lake. Sorry.
Oh, no, you're right. Go ahead.
Okay.
Sorry.
And this is my first time coming here, so I'm very nervous. And I'm not sure if I'm at the right agenda, you know, place to, I just wanted to, I basically came here, I wanted to know more about my community, what's going on in Plumas Lake area, the development. I know we just had a groundbreaking. And, and I wanted to find out like more about, you know, getting like transportation system there, you know, you know, what type of shopping areas that we're gonna have. Are we gonna have things like a laundromat, you know, that's, you know, things that, you know, the community could use instead of having to go to like Uba City, you know, to, you know, to do something. But like I say, I don't know if this is the right format for that. I'm just, I came here to, basically to listen to see, you know, what's going on. And, and that's basically, you know, what I have. Thank you.
Okay. Ma'am, ma'am, did you, ma'am, did you leave your phone number on your card? So Supervisor Bradford, who's your supervisor, is not here today. And we'll forward that to him and he can reach out to you. Okay, thank you.
Next card we have is Angela. Angela, I believe it's Earls.
Good morning. My name is Angela Earls. Flora Jones is my neighbor. And so we again are trying to find out some information about our community and what's going on in Plumas Lake. I particularly have a request for understation speed bumps to be placed on River Oaks Boulevard near the school. There is a lot of traffic in the area. All the growth is causing a lot of congestion and my house faces that road. And I actually have concern, and I have neighbors who have small children who are going to that school. And I just think there, we need to address trying to slow the traffic down in that area, especially as it gets closer to the schools. So I don't know, again, like Flora, I don't know if this is the right forum to come in and make this request, but hopefully you guys can direct us on how we can address these issues.
All right. Okay, great. We'll have Supervisor Bradford reach out to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Mary?
No more.
Okay. So with that, we're gonna move back up to item 32, special presentations. We're gonna present proclamation to Kimberly Ross Pollard on her retirement. So Kimberly and the other agencies that are gonna present, if you could all could meet me up here. All right, I'll go first and then turn it over to James and everyone else. Okay. So it's Board of Supervisors proclamation honoring correctional, see that, correctional corporal Kimberly Ross Pollard. Whereas Kimberly Ross Pollard was raised in Southern California and later moved to the Uba Center area and began a distinguished career in law enforcement. She joined the Uba County Sheriff's Department in 1996 as a deputy sheriff one, assigned to the jail, jail division, a position later reclassified in 2024 as a correctional officer. And whereas Kim is a proud graduate of San Marino High School and continued her education at Sierra College, studying liberal arts, she earned her bachelor's degree in liberal studies from California State University Sacramento, and went on to receive her teaching credentials, serving as an educator in the Elk Grove Unified School District for many years. And whereas during her nearly three decades with the Sheriff's Department, Kim has served as a, in a variety of capacities, including court bailiff, earning a respect of the supervisor, court judges, and staff, as well as commissary officer, classification officer, program officer, officer in charge, honor guard member, and most recently correctional corporal promotion received in 2022. And whereas Kim demonstrated a strong aptitude for leadership, serving as a training officer for most of her career. Her exceptional communication skills are instrumental in her success and helped, helped cultivate a supportive and professional environment for both staff and inmates. And whereas Kim's commitment to service, I left my glasses at home in case you guys are wondering why I'm sticking this thing still out here, extended beyond the jail facility as she actively participated in local, state, and federal policy advocacy efforts, exemplifying her passion for community and involvement in public service. And whereas, whereas known for her integrity, compassion, and mentorship, Kim has, Kim leaves behind a legacy of professionalism and camaraderie. She has positively impacted on her career and lives of countless individuals within the sheriff's office and is regarded as a mentor, role model, and friend. And whereas as Kim enters retirement, she looks forward to spending more time with her husband, Aaron, and pursuing her many passions, including traveling, participating in Scottish Games, and Police Olympics, and embracing new friendships and adventures. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Uba County Board of Supervisors hereby commands Correctional Corporal Kimberly Ross Pollard on her 29 years of outstanding and distinguished service with citizens of Uba County, and extends his heartfelt appreciation, and the best wishes for her happy and fulfillment, fulfilling retirement. I can't believe I made it through that.
Well, good morning, everyone. Senator James Gallagher, and I also wanted to be here to honor Kim Ross Pollard for her many years of service to Uba County and the Sheriff's Office, serving in the jail and as a bailiff, and all the many things that she has done, you know, in her career. It's been a great career. And I know she's looking forward to some time, you know, that retirement and with her husband, Aaron. You know, we wish her all the best. And also, I mean, I've just, I've been able to, you know, know Kim through political stuff as well. You know, she served on the Republican Central Committee in Sutter County. And so we did a lot of, you know, different activities from that end. But what maybe a lot of people don't know is how proud she is of her Scottish heritage, even participating in the Scottish Games, which if you've ever seen, if you haven't seen the Scottish Games, you should go check it out. I mean, what these guys do is pretty amazing. You know, like carrying those big old logs. What do you call that? What is that?
Caber.
The caber. Yeah. I mean, I don't know. I don't know how she does that stuff, but she's amazing. And she's participated in that as well. So her email is even Scottish Kimmy, you know, if you don't know that. But anyway, like, I've just really enjoyed the time that I've been able to interact with Kim. I know how much he cares about this community, you know, certainly has defended this community in the law enforcement arena, but also just in being active and involved in our community and making sure that this is a, this continues to be a great community, to raise a family, to have opportunities. And I know that's always been something that's really close to her heart. So I'm, you know, I'm excited and honored to be here to recognize you, Kim. And thank you, again, for your dedicated service. And I wish you all the best in your, in your retirement. I'm sure I'll see you around. Maybe at a Scottish Games. I gotta get over there. So, and we have a, we had a special proclamation prepared on behalf of the state legislature, on behalf of myself and Senator Megan Dunn, and her district aide is here today. So, yeah.
So hello there. My name is Tasha Weaver. I am a district representative on behalf of Senator Megan Dally. Yes, we wanted to make present today to present this. This is, I was reading it and I go, what has she not done? Thank you so much for your service to this community. And thank you so much for all that you have done to go ahead and provide and protect and serve. Words that can even really describe just how appreciative we. Or sends her condolences for not being here, but is, received this and see that it has hurt, it just has. So thank you again and congratulations.
There you go. And David Morgan with Congressman Lamalfa's office. It's my honor and privilege to be here today to recognize you and your 29 years of service here in Uba County and in law enforcement. A lot has changed in those 29 years. And I don't know if we advertised openly in the jail system that you were in the Scottish Games and not somebody to be messed with. I hope we did put that out there. And I know Doug would have absolutely wanted to be here. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here today. He's up in the north part of the state. We've got a bunch of town hall meetings, but he said to make it special. Though I'm here today to read you what we, what we put together. So Correctional Corporal Kimberly Ross Pollard, Uba County Sheriff's Department, in recognition of your 29 years of dedicated service and leadership in law enforcement to the citizens of Uba County, we appreciate your commitment to serving the people of Northern California, and we wish you all the best in your retirement. Go kick some butt. And we also got a flag here that was flown over the US Capitol for, you know. They're gonna run out of wall space and things.
Too much.
Come on. One is Gallagher.
Something underneath, it'd be a quick change. Editioned underneath, change.
All right. Thank you, guys. Give you a few more minutes for pictures. The items that we pulled, should we do those first before we go to county departments?
Sure.
Okay. All right. All right. So the items that we pulled off of consent, we're gonna take those first. So item 386. You know who that was, Kevin?
Yeah, Community Development. That's CSA 66, Slurry Seal Project.
Morning, Board. Wes, project manager, Public Works. We awarded this project back May 13th. It's the 2025 CSA Resurfacing Project. Project consisted of approximately 25 miles for resurfacing, included crack seal, slurry seal, striping. Final construction cost $2,260,653.45. The work was completed on August 1st. Once the board accepts the project as complete, Public Works Director will file a notice of completion for the project with the Uba County Recorder, and we can release the project payment bonds. Are there any questions?
So I had asked to pull, or sorry, through the.
Yeah, go ahead.
I had asked to pull this item from consent calendar just because I kind of wanted to report out on, on what part of the county this was. The, on the public facing side of the portal, it didn't have a list of the project. It kind of gave an overview of the project name and number, but it didn't, it didn't really say what part of the county it was in, or if there was change orders that were also being approved, anything like that. So if there's any additional information you can give us on, just an overview of what part of the county this was and what funded it.
Yes. So no change orders with this project. The project is Plumas Lake, basically north Plumas Lake, had approximately 75 roads that went from Simron Drive north to Algonon Road. We covered 550,000 square yards of roadway, put it somewhere around 7,500 residents.
Okay. And I assume this is paid for out of the tax assessments special to that?
Yeah, the Community Service District 66 assessments.
Thank you. That answers my questions.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
Move for approval?
Second.
On favor? Aye.
Aye.
Um, any public comment on this? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item 394.
Good morning, the Board. Sam Button, Public Works. So this item is to approve the attached resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to execute a restricted grant agreement. This is for the Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant that we were just awarded from Caltrans, and it funds a climate action and adaptation plan that will identify and assess climate change impact risks due to infrastructure within, within the unincorporated areas of the county. Any questions from the Board?
Through the chair. I also asked to pull this from consent just because I kind of want to know, is, is the initial $500,000 gonna lead into additional reporting requirements, additional layers of governments, additional approvals in the future, additional staff time? I know it's, we have, we have, what does it list as? Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. And it specifically mentions climate change. So, and it's a state funded deal. So what are the ties? What are we gonna be held accountable for in the future by accepting this money? It seems kind of like a lot of other government programs where they give you money to get started, and then they're gonna have large expectations in the future and additional regulation that I don't really know would fit Uba County.
Yes, understood. And so through the chair, this is a great opportunity for future grants. And that's one of the reasons that we went after this. One of the catalysts for this was, I believe Davis did a plan similar to this and was able to get a $27 million Cool Paving Project funded. So I do understand that the climate change and those types of things can be polarizing for certain groups, but this, no strings attached after the plan's done. I do know that we have a lot of plans within Public Works to track and those types of things. But over the next couple of years, we will have some staff time and consultant time to get this plan done. But it really does set us up for future successful grant projects. So that was the nexus for this. Hopefully that answers your question.
There's no commitment to additional regulations of our county in relation to climate change or anything related to that?
No, it, it looks and addresses the vulnerabilities of our infrastructure, but there's no strings attached after the plan's done, or any additional red tape after the plan's done, other than our just grant requirements of getting the plan done, invoicing correctly those types of administrative procedures.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions through the Board? Any public comment on this item? Are there any motions?
I'll move that we approve this.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. I asked for. All right. Thank you, Sam. Item 367.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good morning, Chair and members of the Board. My name is Jimmy Bartolome, and I service the Deputy Director at Health and Human Services. I respectfully request your consideration in approving the renewal of the memorandum of understanding between Uba County and the Sacramento County Department of Human Assistance. This renewal continues our longstanding arrangement with Sacramento County for the administration of the Cash Assistance Program for Immigrant. of the Cash Assistance Program for Immigrants, also known as CAPPY. Through this agreement, Sacramento County Department of Human Assistance processes initial applications and manages ongoing CAPPY cases on behalf of Yuba County residents. Yuba County's CAPPY caseload is very small, currently averaging approximately four cases per year. The Cash Assistance Program for Immigrants is also available to certain categories of immigrants who are lawfully present in the United States but are ineligible for federal SSI benefits solely due on their immigration status. Due to this low volume, it is not operationally or financially practical for Yuba County to establish and maintain separate eligibility processing for the program. This shared service model allows us to fulfill our responsibilities to eligible residents without duplicating administrative systems or staff. This partnership is part of a regional collaboration known as the North State Orange CAPPY Consortium, which enables smaller counties like Yuba to utilize the administrative infrastructure and subject matter expertise of larger counties. Sacramento County serves as the lead administrative agency for the consortium and is responsible for ensuring compliance with state regulations and maintaining accurate case records. It is important to note that the CAPPY program is fully funded by the state of California with no federal financial participation. The state provides funding for both benefit payments and administrative costs. Under this MOU, state allocated CAPPY and administrative funds are sent directly to Sacramento County to cover the costs of managing cases on Yuba County's behalf. There are no changes to the scope, responsibilities, or funding terms in this renewal. This is a continuation of an effective and cost-efficient partnership. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I guess I had a couple of questions. So normal cash aid is funded through the federal government that flows to the state? So since this isn't, the work requirement that's going to be being implemented on the other aid will not be implemented on this one, then?
No.
Okay, and so this program, there's a lot of stages in immigration, obviously, and so the very end stage is citizenship, but there's three or probably four different phases before that. So this is for one of the very early phases before they qualify for aid? And is there a term for the correct stages?
So this is specifically, let me get my notes here. This is specifically for individuals who are lawful permanent residents, refugees and masilees, and certain elderly and disabled immigrants who entered the U.S. lawfully but do not meet the federal SSI immigration requirements. So to be eligible, you have to be ineligible for SSI/SSP solely due on your immigration status. You must be 65 years or older, blind or disabled, be a resident of California, meet certain income and resources requirements, and be a noncitizen and meet the immigration status criteria.
Okay, thank you. All right, I move to approve.
Through the Chair.
Yes.
One more comment, one question. So with a lot of the, a lot of the refugees that were put here over the last few years becoming unqualified for federal aid and federal programs, do we see that this program's gonna be more taken advantage of this year or more useful?
I don't foresee that. This is strictly, we've gotten three applications in this last year and four ongoing cases, so I don't foresee that, because it's been a longstanding program, so I'm not foreseeing that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. Okay, county departments. All matters listed under county departments are action items which will be considered and voted on separately. Item 35, County Administrator, adopt resolution approving the tax sharing agreement between the City of Marysville and Linda Fire Protection District. Shaun.
All right, good morning, Board of Supervisors, Shaun Powers, Assistant County Administrator. Before your Board today is a tax sharing agreement between Linda Fire and City of Marysville. Your Board might be wondering why the Board's actually hearing this item, because the county is the tax collection system for the state of California for property taxes. The Rev and Tax Code requires that the county negotiate on behalf of a special district, which Linda Fire is. I've been a part of this role since Chief Hegstrom took over as an intern chief for City of Marysville, and this project came to fruition. I compliment Chief Hegstrom, who unfortunately could not be here today because he is deployed down to Southern California, lending assistance down here, but we do have fire service staff here if the Board has any operational questions about it. And I also give compliments to Kathy Domenico from Capital PFG that Linda Fire employed as a consultant to help with this process. But it is a very unique situation that you have two agencies that are in mutual agreement, one to give up a service and one to take over a service, and they completely negotiated on their own what the terms and conditions of the fiscal portion of that exercise is. That's what this tax sharing agreement says. You will take over service X with these revenues related to Y, and we were simply more of an observer through this whole process. So I will say the county has fulfilled its role by being present and a representative of what we're supposed to represent a special district, but Linda Fire was well capable of handling this. And compliments to City of Marysville and Linda Fire for working this out and making this happen. By approving this agreement, this will streamline a process a little bit more through LAFCO, because with an executed tax sharing agreement, the fiscal piece of that exercise will check that box, and then it will still go through LAFCO to make sure all the services and support that still the residents of City of Marysville receive are at the same level of service or higher. So with that, I would entertain any questions from the Board on the tax sharing agreement.
Any questions from the Board? Could I just make a comment that, yeah, it's great to see that and see it going through. As a former member of the Hallwood District 10 Fire Board, I was involved with the City of Marysville because we contract with them, so Linda will be covering a much larger area of the county, so it's gonna be a good thing.
Through the Chair. Just a highlight on here, just to kinda talk about the funding a little bit. Forty percent of all property tax revenue received by the city's gonna go to fire, and then 41.5% of sales tax revenue generated in the city in the annexed areas of the district are also gonna go to fire. So it's a pretty good deal. I mean, it means substantial investment in Marysville's Fire Department, utilizing assets correctly and minimizing overhead, so it means more boots on the ground, more people to do the work, so it's great.
Any other comments? Questions? Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Okay, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Community Development Services adopt resolution approving and recognizing the Yuba Sutter Bicycle Implementation Plan, the Regional Guide for Active Transportation Funding and Implementation in Collaboration with Sutter County, Marysville, and Yuba City. Mike.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and fellow Board members. Mike Lee with Community Development. So the Yuba Sutter Bicycle Implementation Plan is a plan that was spearheaded by Yuba Sutter Blue Zone, regional and collaborative effort between Yuba County, Sutter County, Marysville, and Yuba City. The Blue Zones has requested that your Board consider adoption of a resolution in support of the plan, and since your Board has not yet seen the plan or familiar with it, we've requested that Yuba Sutter Blue Zone come do a presentation on the plan, and then you can consider adoption of the resolution. So with us this morning is Ricky Samioa from Yuba Sutter Blue Zone, and he's going to do a brief presentation.
What are you guys doing there at Blue Zones now, Ricky? Those pictures? There you go. Oh, it was code enforcement hearing.
Yeah, exactly. I wrote some notes here, so I'm gonna try to follow my notes so I can stay on time. Good morning, Vice Chair and members of the Board, staff, and members of the public. My name is Ricky Samioa. I'm the Public Policy Lead with the Blue Zones Project in Yuba Sutter. Today, I'm here to provide a brief overview and answers any questions regarding the Yuba Sutter Bicycle Implementation Plan and Resolution before you. So what is the Yuba Sutter Bicycle Plan? Doesn't like me.
That's why we have IT standing by for you.
Okay, appreciate it. So what is the Yuba Sutter Bicycle Implementation Plan? It really is a collaborative effort. The plan was developed through joint efforts with Alta Planning, Design, Blue Zones Project, Yuba Sutter, Sutter County, Yuba County, both cities. It involves thorough community involvement, including interviews with Public Works, community leaders, advocacy groups such as YAVA, and the Built Environment Committee, which your staff are part of as well, that we meet on a quarterly basis to go over our blueprint from Blue Zones. The purpose, the plan provides a comprehensive, data-driven roadmap for expanding safe, equitable, and connected bicycle infrastructure across both Yuba and Sutter Counties. It highlights critical gaps in our current network and recommends quick-build projects such as protected bike lanes, bike bullbars, levee pathway enhancements, and robust wayfinding requirements. So one of the examples, I think, is on this slide, that looks at Simpson Lane in a way that we might be able to use a quick-build design to dedicate a bike lane that is protected from traffic. It focuses... So this will be the network, so imagine a network that goes from the buttes all the way to Yuba College through all the jurisdictions, and all those different letters indicate areas where there may be an opportunity to enhance those areas. So it focuses both on near-term demonstration projects and longer-term spine networks connectivity. So we call that, we called it the spine, so it would be kind of a spine that goes across from both counties. It integrates equity tools like Healthy Places Index and Cal Environmental Screen to prioritize investments in disadvantaged communities. It serves as a resource for project concepts, cross-sections, and recommended facility types. Encourages natural movement, active living, and safe, accessible travel for people of all ages and abilities, aligns with the Blue Zones Project goals of advancing healthy mobility and regional vitality. The resolution formally recognizes the plan as a regional guide for prioritizing active transportation projects, pursuing funding and aligning implementation efforts through all the jurisdictions. As emphasized in your staff report, this is a policy statement that strengthens joint applications for state and federal grants, especially those administered by SECOG, the California Active Transportation Program, and other federal resources. A new addition in your staff report is language showing how this master plan supports SECOG's Regional Trail Network vision. The planned spine network and quick-build projects are designed to connect with the enhanced, the region-wide trail system being pursued by SECOG, providing critical links for both transportation and recreation. By integrating our efforts with SECOG's Trail Network, we position Yuba County for greater leverage and technical assistance when competing for regional trail funding and technical support. This also aligns with SECOG's Metropolitan Transportation Plan, Sustainable Communities Strategy for Regional Collaborations, Greenhouse Gas Reductions, and Safe Multimodal Access. More importantly, there's no direct budgetary impact of adopting this resolution. This is enabling policy action rather than a funding one. So your staff recommends adopting the resolution, recognizing the Yuba Sutter Bicycle Implementation Plan as our guide for regional active transportation project funding and implementation, and to authorize the Chair's signature. With that, I'm happy to take any questions from the Board.
Any questions?
Through the Chair.
Yes.
Just a couple. So with a focus on multi-modal transportation and bike-friendly, transit-friendly facilities, was Yuba Sutter Transit involved in consulting for the implementation plan?
Yeah, that's a great question. I was not part of it. I came in about eight months ago, this was put together in 2023, but I imagine that they were actively involved. I cannot speak on that fact, but I think the things that you guys are doing like in Cedar Lane and those investments proves that you guys are doing a tremendous job on making connections for multimodal type of investments.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just think that they're the ones that get our bikes over the bridges most of the time, and yeah, it'd be a big miss if they weren't involved in the planning for this resolution, for making it a regional implementation plan, so.
Absolutely, I think that's a great point. This particular plan looks at Simpson Lane as a way to cross to the other side and making that a safe connection for bikes and pedestrians.
Any other questions? I have a few questions, Sam.
Just a couple of comments. When you talk about disadvantaged communities, there's the couple of blocks next to Yuba College that are obviously disadvantaged community, but the rest of it, I didn't see incorporating what are the most disadvantaged communities in our area. And then prior to the Yuba College facility in Yuba City, I think this made a lot of sense, bringing a route that students could take to Yuba College. Fantastic. But with the Yuba College facility, I don't know that the drive of having a route to the old Yuba College campus from Yuba City is as necessary of a goal, and it might be the spine would incorporate other objectives.
I have one more comment, and just looking at this, the only thing I have attached is a resolution, so I don't have an implementation plan to consider. So I don't, I don't know if that's, if we need to have that submitted, or we can review it, and the public can review it to decide if they wanna agree to a resolution that supports a plan that we haven't seen. But I think that we should probably take this to the next meeting so that we can have the implementation plan submitted so that we can consider it.
Does that work with the timeframe?
Oh, no, that works. So you should have a copy, and we'll make sure you get it.
Yeah.
Through the Chair.
Yeah. Simpson Lane with bicycles is not a, not a good idea. It's very dangerous along that road for anybody on a bicycle. You're fair game.
I absolutely agree.
So, you know, just add that to the comments, that's not a safe area for bicycle riders.
Is there gonna be a off, like off to the side route eventually on Simpson Lane? I rode my bike from my house out to Simpson Lane to the airport, and then when I came back, I came over the East Street Bridge, and that's the way to go for me now. It's just as quick and safer on a bike. That was my two cents. I agree with Andy. People are going way too fast on Simpson Lane and trucks and everything else, unless it was like separated, like, isn't that what we're doing out by the casino now? It's gonna be a separate bike lane off, so there'll be like a landscape barrier and then a bike lane.
If you don't have a solid barrier, you're fair game, and there's no streetlights out there.
Yeah.
At night, they're hood ornaments.
I absolutely agree. The current status of Simpson Lane is very dangerous. And so this, this particular plan kind of puts ideas out there as a way to solve some of those dangers. So this is an example of a quick-build project that can be put together that doesn't cost that much money and you actually put barriers on each side. So that's, that's a, that's a, on the screen, you can see that's, that would be Simpson Lane. And you would actually protect bikers on each side. So that's, 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 that's what the plan has, ideas, ways to create safer ways to get through, through the communities.
You're gonna break this back.
What's that?
You're gonna break this back with?
Absolutely. We should be able to get you a plan ASAP.
Thank you.
Okay, I have one more question. I don't know if it's off-topic or not, but I rode my bike Sunday morning from my house in Hallwood around the city of Marysville and then back around the city of Marysville and back. The new crossing at Highway 70, it seems like it'd be so easy to get funding to build a bridge right there on the, next to the trestle and have a straight shot across. Instead, you have to go up north on 70 and you gotta cross all those lanes to get to the other side on the bike trail. So I don't know if that would be Caltrans or the city of Marysville or if there'd be a, you know, a collaborative effort between all of us to try to get some type of funding, state or federal funding to put that in. Because all in all, this trail around the city of Marysville and the levees is a pretty, pretty good trail. It's a pretty good ride. There's lots of people walking dogs and jogging and, and a few of us riding bikes Sunday morning. But that's just, I know you have to cross 20 as well, but 20 is short and you can see for a long way. Crossing 70 now, the way they did it, it's, it's a lot tougher.
I don't wanna speak for city Marysville or for Caltrans, but I know that that's a huge gap. It's been talked about for a long time. It would make a lot of sense. I think it's part of their capital improvements project. It would have to involve UP as well. And with the improvements that Caltrans are, are gonna construct in the next couple of years and replacing that, that trestle on, on north of the high school there. That's, that's what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, but they, if they put one just north of the trestle.
Right.
It's, I mean, it's already high and hot.
I could actually use the current trestle and I replace it. So to me, they already have the infrastructure, so that would be my solution. But this all kind of ties to kind of SECOG's Regional Trail Network that they're trying to provide. And so that's one of the solutions to try to figure out how do you connect East Marysville back to the levy, you know, the levy down over there by, along the river. I mean, it'd be a great connection. I know they're talking about other solutions, but I think that I agree with you. This particular plan allows for those connections to kind of happen, to kind of bring about, like if you happen to have more bicycles driving safely from Sutter, Buttes, all the way down to Yuba County and the Yuba College, that those networks actually tie to the spine as well and create like kind of this, you know, bigger looking plan, safer for, for bikes.
Yeah. All right.
But we'll make sure we get you that, that master plan. You can take a look at it.
Put the spine to the entertainment zone so it goes through more disadvantaged communities and connects to the future.
Absolutely. I think that's part of the, what the spine does, that it just connects to some of your things that you're already working on. So it doesn't, it just kind of adds in, to what you guys maybe already been working on. So this is not the solution for all the trails. This is just to create kind of this long spine between all the municipalities.
All right. Any further comments or questions?
I just want to thank Ricky and his team for the efforts they're putting in, in the, in the region for future planning and making some quick-build projects make things easier in the future and not doing it in a way that commits us to, to funding things in the future. It's voluntary. It's things that we can push through when we want to and on a timeline that we can afford. So I appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome. We can talk about our quick-build project across three from T Matthews and Yuba County Office of Ed and the city of Marysville are working on that on 12 and E. That's another quick project that's gonna slow down traffic on East Street and make it safer for students and, and staff to kind of walk across on, on East Street there. So that's another example of quick builds and how you can make things not that expensive, make them beautiful. We'll, we'll incorporate art into it and, and be able to kind of slow down traffic and make it safer for pedestrians.
They don't need to slow down traffic through Marysville.
Yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna shadow Renick's comments because I was on the Trails Commission for, how many years did you stick me on the Trails Commission way back then, Kevin? Many years, and it seemed like we banged our head against the wall more than anything. So it's great to see Blue Zones and working with everybody and, and doing an effort and maybe we can get some, some of these trails fixed. I know we're gonna table this, but if anybody's here from the public to speak on this, I would like to entertain public comment on it. There are none? Okay. So what do we need to do exactly to, just gonna, okay, so we're gonna continue this item to the next regular Board of Supervisors meeting?
Well, thank you for the opportunity and we'll get you that plan ASAP.
Yeah, that'd be great if we could have it way ahead of time.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ricky. Appreciate it. Okay. Item 37, Community Development and Services Approved Amendment Number Three, The Agreement with Wood Rogers Incorporated for the Plumus Lake Boulevard SR 70 Interchange Phase Two Project Authorized Chair to Execute.
Good morning to the board, Sam Button Public Works. To provide a little bit of background on the project, this is for the Plumus Lake Boulevard Interchange Phase Two Project, a portion of the planned projects from the Plumus Lake specific plan. The project was awarded $35 million or $35 million in federal dollars earlier this year, and we're currently working on design to get this construction started in 2026 or 2027. Although this project has conceptually been laid out for many years, there are items that weren't in our toolbag when the project first started. We've been working through some value engineering and believe we have an opportunity to save up to $13 million. So on the screen, I'll see if I can get the laser pointer to work. Little red light. Awesome. So on the screen, we have a visualization of the proposed change that would allow the, the cost savings. In blue, we have the existing layout and in black, just to the north, we have the proposed layout or a conceptual, a potential proposed layout. And by constructing two roundabouts, we could greatly decrease the size of the railroad bridge. Actually, what I'll do is to, I'll visualize this, I'll point to it. So this is the railroad bridge right here. Reduce a large section of the road and reduce our rideaway impacts. We would increase traffic safety as well as slow speeds down and provide a warm entry point to the Plumus Lake community. The savings could be up to $7 million in roadway costs, $8 million in bridge costs, and we'd have rideaway savings, like for example, five and a half acres of valuable rice land. This would increase the design by about 1.1 million, hence the amendment today, and approximately 3.6 million in retaining wall costs. But overall, we are estimating up to potentially $13 million in savings. So any questions from the board?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Hey, thank you, Sam, for listening when, I don't remember what board member was talking about it, but it was when we were talking in closed session about something different. But thank you for listening and bringing back ideas that are outside the box and looking for savings even on a well-funded project. I really appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments?
If I could, just through the chair as well, yeah, we, we appreciate, I mean, appreciate the comment and with your guys' input. And I do want to say thank you to the Wood Rogers team for being able to bring this to fruition and in front of us. I know it was a lot of effort on their side to, to ultimately help us promote and, and make improvements throughout this phase. So just wanted to say thank you to the board and thank you to Wood Rogers as well.
Is there anyone from the public that would wish to speak on this? So I have a question, Sam.
Not only the rice ground, but will we have to now buy less property between the existing freeway and the railroad? There were some parcels along there. So I see you moved it further north. So what will that have us not having to buy a parcel down there as well?
Yeah, so we're potentially, or we're still working through the final details and, but at this point, there, there is an inkling or an estimate that we'd be able to reduce some of the, the property acquisitions.
All right. Okay. Double motion.
So moved.
On second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Thank you, Sam. Appreciate it. All right. Correspondents?
So we do have three items. We have 375-2025. It's four notices from California Fishing Game Commission regarding a meeting that they will be having on August 13th, 14th, 2025, and three notices of proposed regulatory language. And then 405-2025 is a letter from Honeycut Aviation regarding review of airport fuel flow rate increase. And we also have 406-2025. It's a letter received from residents of the Captainville community regarding concerns at Pendola Road.
All right. Any questions?
Through the chair. I just had a question on the Honeycut Aviation letter we received. They, they did make some statements that some of the previous items that we passed are affecting them. So I'd, I'd like to request that maybe we get the, the previous three or four years of, of fueling costs from Honeycut Aviation, just so we can see how we affected them with the changes that were made last year. So maybe we can review that in, in a future meeting.
Through the chair. I called Honeycut Aviation. It's a very small amount of tax increase. I think it's 10 cents a gallon. I didn't think it was significant enough change to warrant.
Could, could we have maybe Jason do a presentation to the board? I mean, not right now, but could we put it on the agenda for a future meeting?
And, and that's something, so, so you had Supervisor House. We could have Jason request the information from Honeycut. When that information's received, that could be coupled with a presentation. The airport, excuse me, not the airport manager, former airport manager, current deputy director and CDSA could perform. Jason, you're looking at me, is that a?
That's all right.
Possibility? Okay. But, but starting with gathering some additional information from Honeycut Aviation so that we can kind of quantify what, what this impact is that they're concerned about.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Board and staff member reports. Start down here with Andy.
Interesting figures on the fentanyl deaths per year. Back in 2005, accounted for 5.8% of all dog overdose fatalities. But by 2023, share soared over 69%. We're currently losing 72,000 people a year to fentanyl. That's more than all the people who were killed in the Vietnam War, which I think was about 10 years long. It's getting to really be a, a bad situation. I think we need to see what we can do about eliminating that, that, those losses in our county. I talked to the WIREC and there's a project going on, this South County Infrastructure Project. And what we're gonna ask them to do is to do a presentation with the board and all the staff here so they know what's happening with that South County Infrastructure, Infrastructure Project. It's approximately $195 million. And I think we just got, it's not fully funded yet, but we're working on it. And then another example of the stupidity in Sacramento is AB 495, a legal pathway for traffickers to access your children. AB 495 opens the door to state-enabled child trafficking. It gives any relative or even a non-relative the power to take custody of your child just by handing over a signed affidavit to the school, daycare or medical provider. No court orders, no background check, no parental consent, no parent's signature, no questions asked. And my question is, why do we allow stupid people to pass stupid laws that put our children at risk? That's just for general information on.
Thank you.
All right. Nick?
Thank you. So I've got a couple of items that might take a little bit, but the airport, I went on a tour of the airport properties and got the update on, on some of what we heard earlier from a concerned citizen. FAA is heavily engaged with our airport on, on coming up with a safe plan to allow that specific type of activity at the airport. I toured the facilities and was presented with the, the FAA's findings and, and recommendations and the cooperation between them and our airport. So I don't see us being at risk of losing grants or any other concerns there at the airport. I think they're done a great job in communicating and things that are important take time. And air traffic safety and liability at our airport is super important to all of us. We don't get it back if we lose it. If we have a major liability, we don't, we don't recover. That airport doesn't recover if we, if we have a major accident. We're, we're part of the fault in that. So thank you to our airport staff for all they're doing out there.
Did, did you happen to find out that I single-handedly did all this?
No. I actually didn't hear your name at all.
We're proud of you, John.
Yeah. And so there's, there's, they're actively working on it. So don't lose faith in the airport. All right. Now, I did, I did ask for an item to be brought up this week. It didn't quite make the timeline because it came out right after our last agenda setting. But the US Department of Justice, Department of Justice issued a statement naming sanctuary jurisdictions in our state and across the whole government. But they also, more importantly, laid out a bunch of characteristics. Well, right now, they've only, they've only targeted major cities and major, um, um, major states that kind of fit the political agenda, I guess you'd say. But we fall into a lot of the characteristics that they named, namely that we have laws, laws or directives that formalize practices to limit law enforcement's cooperation with the US Department of Immigration Customs. We have restrictions on information sharing with the Department of Justice and Immigration in multiple aspects. We have, let's see here, we have funding restrictions in supporting immigration efforts. We have the non-cooperation with federal enforcement. Let's see here, and most of this is under state law. There's a, the, I think it's called like trust in government law or, or something of that nature that limits what we can do as a state and what, or as a county and what we can tell ICE and what we can tell immigration. Let's see here. And then there's also like federal benefits programs, states and counties that circumvent federal laws prohibiting the provision of federal benefits to illegal aliens and provide them with access to benefits, including healthcare assistance, legal aid, food, housing assistance and other subsidies. It includes states and/or counties that establish standalone benefits programs or equivalents. So there are people in our county receiving benefits at a state level that fall into that illegal immigrant category. And I know there's changes to state law that, that are going to affect, you know, up to 2,000 or more of our benefits recipients in the county. But I think it needs to be hot on our mind in every department that at some point we could land on this list. And when you do, we have to make corrections and I'm sure county council will, will interpret whatever letter they send us telling us that we're out of compliance. But be aware, they, they named the characteristics. And the previous list that we were on, they didn't give characteristics and they named us as one of the sanctuary jurisdictions. In the future, I think it, it's very likely when they get the low-hanging fruit, they'll move on to counties like ours. So just be aware and I'll bring up dates as I get them. And I'd like to also, I individually, I'm gonna set up meetings with the department heads. I've already met with, with HHS as a department head, but I also need to meet with the sheriff. But in the future, we might need to bring some more business back to the county just to make sure that we don't, we don't fall on the list or we don't have to go begging to get off of the list.
Through the chair. We had talked about this earlier in our meetings about being a non-sanctuary county. Is there a way that we can add that to a future agenda? a way that we can add that to a future agenda to decide whether we can or can't be a non-sanctuary county and declare ourselves as such?
If I could, through the chair, as Supervisor House had pointed out, you know, Yuba County being a subdivision of the state, most of the characteristics that Supervisor House was listing are, that could potentially be an issue, are state laws that the county needs to follow. So I understand that as a county, we could, we could definitely make a statement that we're not going to add to those characteristics. We're not going to adopt county ordinances that would further those characteristics. But ultimately, we as a county still needs to abide by state law as well as federal law. And I think that's the rub, right, that is being pointed out, I think, by Supervisor House, is you have a federal agency that's pointing out that there's characteristics that they don't agree with, that I guess conflict with state laws that are in effect that the counties need to abide by.
Well, through the chair, according to the information that I brought across, is there is no actual constitutional clause that says you can be a sanctuary state itself. That's just rules that they seem to apply to themselves. There is actually no legality in the sanctuary state statement that, you know, New York or California is a sanctuary state, but those are, those are things that they've allowed to happen that can be bypassed by specific counties making a decision. The sheriff can say, hey, we're going to cooperate with ICE. We're going to, and as far as I know, our county is cooperating with ICE and all federal authorities, unlike New York and certain areas.
And the sheriff is an independently elected official, right? There's a jurisdiction of the sheriff.
Guy in the county. So he, if he says we're not, we're not cooperating, or we are cooperating with ICE, we are cooperating with the federal authorities, then his authority overrules the state, as far as I know.
And through the chair, the, we're put in between a rock and hard place with the state and the federal government because we have a federal government that is exercising through Executive Order one forty-two eighty-seven that federal supremacy with respect to immigration, national security, and foreign policy is axiomatic, and the Constitution provides a federal government with the authority regarding immigration to protect the sovereignty of our nation and to conduct relations with nations who must be able to deal with one national government on such matters. So I just think it's something that we need to manage as we go along, make sure that we're, we are following the federal powers and also abiding by state law or questioning or pushing back against state law where we can. It's kind of, it's terrible. It's all linked to funding because if you don't do the right thing at the Sheriff's Department, you lose realignment funding, all this money that comes to house prisoners that would normally be in prison systems but are held in our jails. And a lot of our law enforcement funding hangs in the balance. And same thing with HHS, we have a lot of people on benefits. If we don't do what the state says, we don't get the funding for the things that the state provides from our tax dollars. So I just think it's something that needs to be reviewed routinely and should be a, maybe even a standing item, or maybe a committee could be formed to continue to monitor this. Maybe that's the answer, is to have a ad hoc or standing committee to monitor federal compliance versus state.
If I could, through the chair, an ad hoc committee is something that, you know, the chair could set up. Another item would be a resolution, as I was discussing before, we would have to be crafted in such a way that as a subdivision of the state, we're following state law, we're also abiding by federal law. Maybe we're agreeing to not add any additional county-level ordinances that would further those characteristics that the federal.
Could it state that we are not a sanctuary jurisdiction? And could we get a consensus to bring that back the next meeting? Because that would be wonderful.
Right, right. Now, on the sanctuary jurisdiction, I think it gets back to definitions, right? Like maybe the federal's definition versus the state's definition. But as far as the county not exacerbating the issue, the county not, this would be something where the board through a resolution could give direction to staff that we're not going to bring forward proposed ordinances, for example, that would exacerbate that issue where we're furthering the division between the state and the federal government on this issue.
I'll throw in my two cents, and then I'll appoint you to an ad hoc committee. If we're following everything right now, I think we're all in agreement. We don't want to add anything else. But even just saying we're a sanctuary county, is that going to put us under the radar now with the state to come start picking on us? So if everything's kosher right now, I don't want to do anything to draw attention to us that could be negative. With that being said, who wants to be on an ad hoc committee on this issue with Renick? Handy. So I'll appoint Renick House and Handy Vasquez to an ad hoc committee to look into this and work with county council and staff and then report back to us. Right? That work for you guys? All right, great. Anything else, Renick?
No, I just appreciate you hearing me out and establishing that committee. Thank you.
Seth?
July twenty-second, Night Market at Mario's Pharmacy on Olive First Avenue, August, sorry, September twentieth. We have the garbage cleanup for Olive First at the airport. And then we have upcoming part of our ad hoc committee of the sister cities, a delegation that I'll be hosting. And so I need to, if I understand the rules correctly, ask for permission for money prior. So this would be my request for us to allocate four hundred dollars to host them.
We, we haven't established, we just postponed that.
We have a department fund for our Board of Supervisors, correct? So that's where we allocate the money from that to various things. So I'm requesting that we allocate that four hundred dollars from there.
Okay, how would you go about doing that?
Maybe there's a few steps there. So is the claim that the board has given direction that to establish a sister city relationship with a city from Thailand?
We're pursuing different possibilities. That's one of the possibilities. And so we are meeting with various delegations from various places.
So?
So has that been board direction, I guess? Maybe that's the first step.
We have enough problems here. I don't think that allocating or visiting other countries is a good use of the supervisor's time myself. We've got plenty of problems here and plenty of things we can straighten out here. And until all the problems are solved in Yuba County, I'd say I would not recommend spending any money or time in other countries.
I'm going to, I'm going to suggest, you already set this up, they're coming here to look at things. And I would, I would say invest the time, but at this point, I don't think we ought to invest the money, like I told you before. So I don't know. What's your thought, Renick?
Well, I didn't know about any of this until like two days ago. I knew I was going on a water tour, but I didn't know it was with a sister city. So my input is that I don't think we should be, I don't think anybody gave direction to establish a sister city. I know it takes time to fill out those relationships and see which ones would be beneficial to our county or to our local trade. But I think I'd like to review the benefits before we invest any of my time in into a sister city. So I would say for now, I just, no, I wouldn't fund it. I wouldn't, I'm probably not going on the tour just because I didn't know what the tour was for. I thought it was just for water and knowledge of my, it was a Cal Water Tour, so I thought it was to learn about the wells and the processes our county follows and our city follows to deliver water to its customers. So, yeah, so I'm out.
I will, I will go on the tour with you, Supervisor Fear, and I'll personally split the meal with you, but I don't think the county should. Okay? Any other things? All right. Kevin?
Just a reminder, Budget Workshop kicks off this afternoon. Clerk of the Board has arranged lunch for the board that'll be in the Marysville Conference Room at noon. Did I get that right, Mary?
Yes, you did.
Okay. And then we'll kick it off. We'll have a full afternoon Budget Workshop today, and then we'll have a full day tomorrow, and then the morning on Thursday.
Janet?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't think I have anything. So with that, we are going to take a ten-minute recess, and we will meet at ten-thirty for a closed session back here in the conference room.
Yuba Sutter Lives Local Government Livestreams are presented by Plumus Lake Self-Storage in Plumus Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at five three zero seven four nine eight eight zero zero. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.